Some important things dealt with, so I want to get us out of here by 5:45 so that we're comfortably seated in the dais out there and start the meeting on time. So, jump right into things. The meeting is now in session and the first item is the 2018-19 audit. I'll call upon Mr. Corey Johnson and Mr. Dan O'Shea, the local auditors from Salh, Axola, OLC.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hopefully, everybody has helped to get a copy of our presentation. A little chart to follow and be a copy of what you draft on. So, I want to say, I think Brian can attest to this, I think it's a compliment to be sitting here at the end of December. And when we first started the year a few years ago, it might have been February or March, we were sitting here drafting one of those state audits. It's gotten better every year, every year, every year. Now, I think, I mean, the financial reporting isn't just better, it's pretty much. You know, I want to highlight before I give my presentation a couple of things that Dan and I were talking about this today as to what we wanted to talk about. Some things we've seen, this is our fourth year doing the audit. It's a couple of highlights. So, obviously, there's been an additional $14 million in state aid, which has helped tremendously. But there's been significant consolidated operations and cost-saving measures, as you'll see when we start to talk about numbers a little bit, that have helped control expenses. The general fund fund balance is a bit... When we started, it was $5 million positive. This year, 20.2 million positive. In just that sort of four years, that's a significant turn for me. 25, 30 scores this week. Don't see a turn like that. So, that's what I'm... Let alone the fund balance is somewhat a situation of cash. But cash balance, four years ago, about an $850,000 overdraft, negative, to about $17.1 million at the end of June 30th, 2019. So, just a couple of highlights. You know, that's more than just this year, but like all the others. So, you were very close on the name, Zellian Kotsky-Axola? That was close. I'm Corey Johnson, this is Dan O'Shea. We've been here working with Brian and John here for a while now. Just a little introduction, kind of some results of the audit, some other required communications. We'll talk a little about some financial statistics and a lot of highlights. My information to Dan's information in case, you know, beyond this meeting, if you have any questions, feel free to contact us. We'd be happy to answer anything we can. Financial state of audit, the audit everywhere that is performed in court with auditing standards generally set by the State of America. What we issue here is an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance we can give you. That means everything in the financial statement will need to be materially accurate. You know, there's no modifications to the opinion or to the report, unlike year one, when here, I'll go back to that. There was actually a going concern in the opinion. Going concerns means we're not really certain beyond one year of the balance sheet date what happens, given the financial condition of the district. So, definitely, again, big improvement. Single audit report, no findings. This is frankly one of the very few districts we work with that we haven't had any issues on the compliance side. Yearly city schools compared to most districts we work with, and Millcreek's another one worth of up here. We get a lot of federal dollars. We've looked at four programs this year, child nutrition cluster, improving teacher quality, students support that, and a bit of enrichment in the special education cluster. Believe it or not, the way the single audit changes, the standards have changed over the last couple of years with some number of standards, uniform guidance. It's called... They've actually limited how much we have to audit on that side. That's a lot of governance. Actually, we audited over 50% of the federal funds the district received. So, we look at that in two-fold. We look at that from control around how the money being spent, how it comes in, how it's earned, how it's fed. And two, then, the federal government puts out a compliance document for each one of those programs. And so, we audit where those funds spend in accordance with the way that someone said it's supposed to be. The answer was yes. We have a lot of clients where we have an extra 10, 20 pages of the reported findings. So, that's good news for you. There were no findings. Some required communications that we have with you, those charged with governance, no difficulties in performing the audit. Like I said, the audit's not better, better, better every year. And I think we've, or with John and Brian, if there's a real consistency with that, I mean, if there's issues, we've talked throughout the year. We try to say head of problems, not the ultimate goal we get here. No disagreements with management. Management represents representations of being before issuing of final reports. We have not issued filings up here to present to you. So, Brian and John signed a paper that says they were honest with us, they gave us everything we asked for, et cetera. So, that's something we have to put in our work papers. And we're not aware of management consulting with any of our accountants, trying to get a different opinion, if you will, on an issue maybe that we've discussed. So, new audit issues that are coming up, I do want to talk about these. Like the other post-employment benefit standard, we'll talk about in a minute, that was adopted last year. But GAZP, people are for agency funds. This is a big one for school districts. Effectively, if you look in your financial statements, there's something called fiduciary funds. And it's just one column of agency funds. What the accounting has to come up with is that every agency fund has to have its own separate income statement. So, as auditors, what does that mean? Right now, we're only auditing the cash balance for each one of those funds as of June 30th of that given year. We've never looked at any income statement issue regarding any of them. And believe it, I do a lot of forensic work. 99.9% of friends working in school districts rely on student activity funds. Because a lot of times, they don't follow the general control structure of the district. It could be the... Hopefully, nobody's a math teacher here. I was going to say the high school math teacher. It's, you know, the math club or what have you. So, there's always, you know, potential for issues there, but it certainly, it's going to change the way we audit, the way we have to look at controls over that. So, next year, it's going to be an interesting year. And last but not least, leases are on the horizon. The year after, basically, every operating lease that goes beyond the year will now have to start to be put on your balance sheets if you're staying in that position. Right now, capital leases are the only thing put on. So, you know why? That's a good question. I came to keep it cheap 20 years ago. And then, so, we would sit with our for-profit clients and help write leases that would stay on the books on purpose. That's what we were hired to do. Enron happened, and all that fun stuff happened because they wanted to fool the school. So, kind of tying that back in with, the GAZP's really tried, and I like what they've done, three big things in the last few years. One, they put the pension liability on the books. Two, they put the other post-employment benefit liability in the books. And three, they're closing the loop on, like, the big ticket items on long-term liabilities, operating leases. They're going to be putting them on the books. They're not going to have much of an income statement effect, but they are putting them on the balance sheet. And they're, John, we're going to be paying a lot for the report. There's no nice way to say that, but that's something I know, you know, we're a whole work group, man. But that's something that you can't get ready in the last month. I think it's something you got to get ready ahead of time. Exactly. Either you adopt it, you pretty much got to have the beginning of the year numbers too, so you're kind of, got to get two years of information. But we got a little bit of time here. But that's a big one. And that's the last big liability, I think, that's, yeah, that's going to be on the books for government. I was going to walk you through the whole report. So, you got to talk about the auditors' report, non-modified opinion. So, let me give you a couple of highlights. So, there's significantly increased in current assets as well as liabilities. The reason is, is because of the new additions. So, you have, they're offset. You have an increase in the assets, which is cash, in that case, an increase in the outlook. Net position increased by $27 million. Now, it's only a negative $282 million. I laughed very loudly, sorry. This is like my, I don't know, sixth board meeting in the last week and a half for school districts, probably close to it. And every, so you know, when you look at your state in the net position, every state in the net position shows a negative balance. For instance, every single one. It's impossible to block it. Why? Well, my next point is, your pension liability was $243 million. So, you have, in most cases, so if you have a capital asset, you want to, you go purchase an asset, you have an asset to offset the debt. In this case, you have a liability with no offsetting asset. So, it just, that's why it drives... When they adopted that standard and started putting pension liabilities and other post-employment benefit liabilities on the books, every source went to a negative net position.
Corey, can you explain how that's calculated, the negative pension liability, how it's allocated to us from ESRS?
Yeah. So, every school district contributes to the ESRS, which is the state, the state system. An actuary then calculates every district's proportional share of that liability. And so, actually, good... So, your liability actually decreased almost $20 million from '18 to '19. But trying not to get too technical, they actually only do the valuation every year. So, what does that mean? Like, well, why didn't the liability change? Well, it changed because they use the same set of assumptions for '19 that they did in '18 when they actually did the valuation. So, next year, it'll change again.
So, just to clarify, we're required to contribute by not contributing participating state retirement system, which is currently has a deficit of $46 billion in the business numbers. That's why our pension contribution is currently about 36% of payroll. So, what they required us to do a couple of years ago was to take our portion share of that as one of 500 school districts across the state and put it on our books.
And you highlighted something else I wanted to say. Like, when you look at your budget, when I started auditing school districts years ago, I mean, the contributing percentage per employee, per teacher was under 5%. And it's now going up to around 36% per teacher. What you can imagine, but that does make your budget...
It matches that, right?
It's pretty much stabilized now, but it's going to, it's projected to remain up there until 2036.
Unless the market does something we don't all see doing. And the reason was, years ago, when the bubble was happening, the state wasn't making contributions for the plan. That's really what caused it. So, Ian, but I'm speaking to you as board of governments, like, that's something that's out of your control. Like, you're told, like, this is what we got to do. So, imagine going from arguing to take 5% to 36%. That, that's a big adjustment on your budget.
So, we're all taking the new board members, asking them to deal with the financial issues. You have to now pay 36% of the number of payroll, the state of payroll is $100. Now, we have to pay 36 extra dollars of the pension fund because it was underfunded back in 2009 or whatever happened to be before that.
It was not ours.
Yeah. So, then, the state is requiring us to pay all of that extra money by the number of persons in the board. And that's one of the reasons why we're having these financial issues.
And you look at, and I'll say this broadly for school districts, most school districts are starting to move something in the system, the environment we're in. I don't know if you ever thought about it in these terms, but like, how much of your budget's actually within your control? I would say it's less than 20%. I've heard people argue less than 20. I believe it's somewhere around there. I don't know if Brian, do you want to weigh into that? But it's, you know, between what's already managed, it's already spent, you know, if you're managing to require certain, to perform certain services for your constituents. Moving on, general fund accounted for about $207 million of revenues, which was up about $4.2 million. In the prior year, part of that was increases in state education grants. That also includes the $14 million annual, the additional funds from the state. There's also some increased delinquent tax collections to help boost local sources of revenue. And then, federal revenues increased just under $1 million due to some Department of Education grants and special education idea funding. General fund expenditures totaled $220 million. This is going to sound a little weird, so give me a second to correct this. Which was a little over 20% increase, but included in that number was a current refunding of $39 million. It's accounting jargon. There's no other way to say it. There's two different types of bond issuances on refundings. There's a current refunding and advanced refunding. They're accounted for differently. Current refunding actually goes into your current expenditures. Thus, why I'm saying, if you looked on here, your expenditures are up 20%, no, they're not. Your expenditures are actually about 10, even with what they were last year if you take that out, which is good to hold the line on. So, really trying to say. In order to talk about it, we're, talk about this one, like, fund balance, though, increased by approximately $12 million in the general fund to $20.2 million. Which is 8.9% of current year expenditures. I mean, that's a, that's enough where you are. I mean, GFOA recommends that 7% to 10% range. You're right there, you're in the middle. Capital assets, so that's all, you know, the value of all the assets that the district owns, pretty much about $5,000, about $102 million. That was a net decrease of about $4.6 million. Most of that's just current depreciation on those assets. Current year capital asset addition, well, like, $0.5 million and a half. Long-term liabilities, again, I was talking about the debt. New debt issuance in the high eighties, so part of that was a current refunding, and 50 million was new money for current capital pools. I was talking about, if you looked at assets and liabilities under state of net position, they're both up a little bit because of that. So, that's, that's, that's good. There's also a swap termination as well. It's really about my... Any questions and thoughts or comments?
Thanks for the good news.
These ones are good, aren't they?
Graciously, if you made it known, there's many board members who have a question after they've just, they can contact you. So, contact me for a minute.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have, first of all, one hour, if the new board members have not yet met, I'm going to make sure Mr. Cosagby's been in the chunnels. He attends all of our meetings, and you may have all, each have already met him sufficiently, just needs to be, you know, that you can play with him. And he's there across the table, and he attends most of our meetings, and this breaks when he's big. And he has a signature on his administration efficiently and professionally. So, those are Mr. Cosagby's. Okay. The next item we have before us is the custodial RFP. Mr. Superintendent.
So, we just wanted, especially for the new board members, to review the process because we're right in the middle of that. This is again something that is required for the financial plan and the RFP earlier this month, or was it November?
November 7th.
So, we don't have just a few things to go over, just to update you where we're at.
So, Brian said November 7th was the date that the RFP was released. On November 21st, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting with anybody who would potentially be bidding on. We happen to have seven different vendors come through, to which I can tell you that two of them are locally based, and then the rest of them have some kind of bigger footprint outside of this general side of the state. Again, just to kind of go over the contract specifications, so there's, it's a three-year contract. If it's awarded, it would be a three-year contract with two-year, two one-year options on the tail end of it. Some of the things, the bigger things that we determined as the committee was that we would maintain ownership of all the equipment. And so, that in the event that something were to happen on the other end, we're not stopped buying a whole new fleet of equipment for each of the buildings. Cleaning supplies, in the contract, it states that any potential winner would actually purchase those supplies unless we could get a better deal. So, we kind of left it open for, they have national buying power, they might be able to beat the rates that we're getting through Co-Stars and other means. Their, the contractor is to have a single point of contact, and so, that is the lead person who would then report any community. That would be the liaison between myself and Paul Fialak, our environmental services manager, and so, that's how we work together. And then, we set it up so that any kind of invoicing process would be done after the fact with all appropriate payroll certifications and actual receipts, so that we would be paying for actual costs as opposed to estimated costs. So, that's at least how the process would be done. The committee, which is made up of 12 members, there, when we set it up, there was going to be three board members. The financial administrator was Mr. Cosagby. There would be the union president and one other steward from Local 95, which is the collective bargaining group that handles our building engineers. There would be the union president and the business agent for Local 1968, which is the collective bargaining group that handles our custodians. There would be one building administrator, who I believe is Rob Cosgrove from Collegiate Academy. There was going to be one EEA member who happens to be the EEA union president, Bill Kuhar. Myself, Rami Kusmiki, the director of non-instructional support, and then Paul Fialak, who is our environmental services manager. So, that's the 12-member committee. We created a rubric that was modeled after the food services rubric that was used when the board awarded the bid to Metz last year for food servicing for the school districts. And so, with that, we are going to judge all of the bids when they come in at the beginning of January. And then, the last thing that I'll mention is that if you don't have a copy of the RFP, the RFP is on the district website under the business office. So, if you go to the district website, departments, and then you do business department, it's attached there as a video.
Questions, comments from the board? Mr. Superintendent.
Just the next steps on this, we have a hearing that's required under the law on January 8th?
22nd.
22nd?
Yes.
To review the bids, and then the following week, we have, we're going to have a presentation. So, the committee is going to get together and review the bids and give you a recommendation. Now, this is not a recommendation to outsource or not. This is a recommendation that if the board would choose to outsource, which of the vendors would be the best fit for the district? And the reason for that is because both the engineers and the custodians are currently under labor contracts, and under the school code, they're required, we're required to give them an opportunity through the negotiating process to come up with a response.
What do you mean by hearing on the 8th?
If I may clarify that, I believe on the 8th, according to the financial projection plan, the superintendent is required to present all whatever bids we receive. And then, would take a period of time to evaluate those afterwards, so that we can then have a public hearing on the 22nd, where the superintendent and the administration is required by law to present to the public and the board which entity would be the recommended entity should the board decide to move forward. You would not be making that decision until May, at the earliest.
Okay. So, Mr. Superintendent. How many building engineers and custodians do we have?
We currently have 63 custodians, and there are 16 engineers, which also include the bar.
And when you're doing the cost comparison, we just had that reported that we've got this costing 36% for pension costs. Would that be taken into consideration in this comparison?
Yes. So, what, zero, once we get, we left, purposely left the report open so they could give us what their recommended staffing structure would look like, so we're not requiring them to staff exactly where we are. But then, once we have that, we'll cost, we'll have the cost for our actual staff and the supply expenses, so that we can compare apples to apples.
And if we were to go with this, if these 80 positions were eliminated, would that mean that our pension percentage would go from 36 to 38 or something like that?
No. So, we contribute a fixed percentage of the payroll, so basically, that contribution would go into those security quarters. I do want to point out, though, that we do get reimbursement from the state for both pension costs and social security. Right now, our pension reimbursement is averaging about 70% of the actual cost, and our social security as well. So, our net cost for those works out to around 13% payroll.
Which is what we would use for the cost comparison?
Yes, yes.
Because the 36 would be, if, yeah, very high.
We would use the net, well, because if we lose the pension contribution expense, we also lose the social security.
I mean, I'm thinking, the contract, well, the state law and the contract also requires that a successful company, should there be one, should the board determine to outsource the service, is obligated to give interviews to each one of the employees of the school districts where otherwise they're affected.
Yeah. Mr. President, I just want to make one further point for the board, that the financial improvement plan assumes the outsourcing of both the custodial and custodial supervision services. And with PFM, we've estimated the savings amount, taking in annual accounts, healthcare, salary, and pension costs at about $1 million a year. Those savings are baked in, and that's also tied to the 2.46% tax increase over the year that the plan requires in order to balance the budget over the term. So, we'll have, with these live bids, we'll have actual market rates to compare against PFM's assumptions. And then, whatever the board ultimately determines the course of action later in the spring, that number will impact ultimately the financial projections and potentially the tax increase. So, just to put a big, I guess, bow on it, to be seasonal, to give that some context.
So, the steps of the process will go forth through January, but we may ultimately, we'll have that amount of time to absorb and interact and learn and ramifications and pick up our minds.
Yes. May, may at the earliest. Yes.
Next item is charter enrollment.
It's here at place tonight. I did throw a couple of charts in just to give you a comparison. I did share the top chart in my update last Friday. Just want to point out that you can see from the beginning of the year, we're down almost 30 students overall in charter enrollment. I did check the numbers today. We're actually down 44 students from the beginning of the year, so we continue to drop, which is a positive trend that we have not seen in past years. So, we're going to continue to, you know, explore our first bring back. If you look at the trends here with the cyber too, you can see that that's our biggest area of success, and we're going to continue to work very hard to reach out to those families and bring those students back. The second page, I just, this shows the information from 2014 on, and you can see it's charter brick and mortar insider. You can see that it looks a lot like steps, and the red lines on this chart represent the sum of some period. So, you can see that's when you see the big increase in charter students, and that's why we decided to walk along campaign over the summer. Again, you can see that over the last two years, that trend has started to subside a little bit. It was a little higher this year because we did agree to some expansions for some of the brick and mortars, but we also were able to obtain caps from those schools. So, as a result, we are going to see an increase, a significant increase in the brick and mortars moving forward, so that's a positive.
Brian, can you let us know demographically, the students, the, or the students, are they mostly elementary school, middle school, high school?
I don't know that, but I will get it.
Thank you.
The other thing I want to point out on the second page, you can see the big jump from a 1617 to 1718. And especially in the cyber program, that was the year we did the reconfiguration. And that's a big reason why we're concerned about, you know, closing additional schools or messing with boundaries, because it seems that every time you do those type of things, families may even say, and choose other options.
that every time we do those type of things, families leave us saying, use other options.
Mr. President?
Can we know more about the movement on the bill proposed by Senator Arkansas, that has our, if cyber charter schools, students, if we have our own cyber program, then they have to pay tuition if they choose to go to another brand? Is the education committee, is it dead? Is it?
Representative Sessi, though?
I'm sorry, Sessi, yeah. Okay, thanks.
And the, the next, I want to bring this up, Neil. When we're looking at the enrollment, public enrollment numbers, there's a spot where they can explain, they can just, the difference, and there's a couple abbreviations for different properties. I didn't understand what PH, what does PH stand for? So it says, places on the PH number.
Which before?
It's the one we're going to go over, just the enrollments.
Oh, the enrollments, yeah. Yeah, that was the same.
Person's access.
Okay, okay, yeah. And then, Brian, I have a question. One of the other things that really, like, for us to consider as we're, and I was just chatting about this before, is when we're looking at the cyber program, I really don't think, we have not highlighted as well, if we can, what we have going on down in the center. Like, that building and the programs there are mildly phenomenal, and they can be so many names of so many of our kids. And I know PA Cyber is one of the biggest, the schools, one of the cyber schools that most of them turn to. They do have a local office, they do offer things like field trips, they do have gatherings for these kids. I know that's one area that we really need to look into offering, so that we do still have social spaces and field trips, and that's what we're looking for, our kids in the cyber schools. And I think that that would be another huge drop. Some of the cyber school kids are leaving for things, still gym classes, still those kind of things, the class sizes, parent schedules. But if we're still able to include that social element within our cyber school, I think we can really bolster out our numbers there. I think a lot more parents are going to try and towards the cyber school options, and we're seeing that change. And here, everybody has a phenomenal program, and really do. So I hope that we can bolster that up a little. Anyone else on this?
Mr. President, somebody responded to Mrs. King's question.
Yes.
Hospital 1897 just entered the House, and then immediately referred to the House Education Committee on September 3rd. It has not been reported out of the committee yet.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to need a brief executive session, and so, wanting to be out of here in 12 minutes, I'm going to, at this point, ask that everyone respect that for us. That leaves us no time to say, well, we're going to do the new business here, and realistically, there isn't enough time to do that justice. There's nothing wrong with any, especially new members, when we're out there in the next meeting to raise any questions they have on what they see in front of them, but it is this, in fact, I'm encouraged that the public would like to see us interact and question and learn about the items that might be of concern. So we'll have to, we did not have the benefit of the committee, oh, maybe this month, and that crunched some of these things, but we need to have a brief session, and I'm going to grab that in 10 minutes, so we do not have a longer session. I say, thank you.